Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Thursday, January 27th, 2022. Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Counselor Kent.
Here.
Counselor Janatino.
Here.
Counselor Cuddy.
Here.
Counselor LaCastro.
Here.
Mayor Quill.
Here. Would you please join us in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, deliberate and just.
Just ask for you to take a moment for sound purr reflection in your own mind. Thank you. Please be seated. Mr. Clerk, public announcements, if any?
Thanks, Mayor. We do have just one announcement this evening. And Jenny Haynes can correct me if I'm incorrect, but I believe the next planning board meeting for the City of Auburn is next week, Tuesday night, February 1st at 7:00 PM or 6:30 PM. Meeting will be held here in council chambers at Memorial City Hall, 24 South Street. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Dugger, your employees, employees leaving the city, employees?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, we've got a few new additions and some retirements. You have Gretchen Messer started with us on January 10th as a planning assistant. So those of you that are in and out of City Hall periodically may see Gretchen, who actually is joining us tonight. We had Myla Herndon as an administrative assistant down at the ambulance. Started with us on January 18th. Mr. Robert Sadler was a motor equipment operator, one of our tractor trailer drivers. Retired on January 18th. As well as Ronnie Allen, who is going to be retiring on January 29th. As a motor equipment operator or truck driver. We've replaced Mr. Sadler with Adam Ferry as a motor equipment operator, starting January 20th. And Ellen Wilson, who had been with us since, I believe, 1993, is a senior account clerk, retires January 27th this year.
Counselor.
Jeff, the new ambulance service personnel, what are their duties?
All the administrative type duties that happen in similar in a position to the fire chief secretary, police chief secretary, things like that. So handling paperwork, billing, purchasing, all of those types of things.
Is this a new position or did it?
It became evident we needed that position so that we could free up the operations director to do what she needed to do.
Thank you.
Yep.
Start out with our first public to be heard. After that, we will open up the public hearing in regards to Community Development Block Grant. So this time, we'll open up the public to be heard. Is there anyone deserving to be heard this evening? No one? Very well. We'll have another session for public to be heard at the end of the meeting. At this point, we'd like to open up the public hearing for the 2022-2023 Community Development Block Grant Action Plan. Is there anyone deserving to speak in regards to that? Legislature Kirk? Please, either podium.
I do prepare some remarks tonight, and I didn't time them, so hopefully they'll be under three minutes.
This is the good part of public hearing. You could speak all night if you'd like.
Oh, okay. Well, good evening. My name is Tricia Kerr. I reside at 2 Sheridan Street in Auburn. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight on the CDBG 2022-23 Action Plan. As a county legislator for District 12, representing a portion of the city, I want to thank you, Mayor and council, for continued investment in safe, affordable housing over the years, and specifically for your partnership with Quga County Health Department on the Lead Task Force. We need more funding to address lead hazards and other environmental risks prevalent in our aging housing stock. Young children in our community are being exposed to lead, which can have permanent health impacts, and I'm grateful for the city's investment and partnership with county health, home headquarters, and others in this area. The federal Community Development Block Grant Program is a vital funding mechanism to support initiatives like this and also homeownership. As the executive director for the Quga County Habitat for Humanity, I can personally attest to the level of interest in homeownership among city renters. We recently held an open application window for our homebuyer program. Over four dozen people applied, mostly city residents. The applications painted a clear picture of housing struggles for many hardworking, low-income families in our community. Many pay exorbitant rents to live in poor housing units with absentee landlords who fail to address unsafe housing conditions. Instead of building equity or wealth to lift out of poverty, they're throwing half or more of their income out the door on poor housing and not able to save or get ahead. While the interest may be there, the ability to achieve the American dream for money remains out of reach without help. The path to homeownership is different for everyone, and many of our partner families work for years to overcome barriers, including poor credit, insufficient income, no credit, and more. So Habitat is currently working on its 23rd and 24th house projects in Auburn, one on Wall Street and one on Madison. This would not be possible without the work of our volunteers, who work right alongside our partner families to help complete construction at no cost. Many of our building materials and supplies are donated, which helps keep costs down and leverages public investment. So I want to invite all of you out to see these properties and personally meet with the partner families, and would like to say that Habitat welcomes the opportunity to strengthen our partnership with the city and to make homeownership a reality for those who dare to dream here in Auburn. Thank you very much and appreciate your CDBG spending allocations this year for affordable housing.
Thank you. Is there anyone else deserving to speak in regards to the CDBG? Please.
Are we asked your name?
Sure.
For the record.
My name is Erica Ryan, site director for Quga County Home Site here in Auburn, New York, 60 Clark Street. I too wanted to piggyback off of what Trish Kerr has mentioned about the benefits of our CDBG funding to affordable housing in our area. We utilize CDBG for our mortgage assistance program, where we're able to allow for up to $4,000 for qualified individuals to assist with closing costs and down payment assistance on home purchasing as their first mortgage. We are also working with city planning right now on an acquisition rehab program. While we've had a little bit of a struggle getting off of our feet on this, we do have one home that has been completed and is now on the market at 89 Walnut Street, and we do have more to come. We still have funding remaining, and we have been granted an extension on that program. So we're hoping that you can see some more improvements in that area in the near future. We also utilize CDBG funding for our home improvement program that we run through Home Site, and like Trish was saying with the lead program that we have, I too sit on the Lead Task Force with the county health department, and a lot of our housing, as we know, a lot of our housing stock is aging and has been an older stock for a very long time. So we utilize funding with CDBG to assist families in bringing that lead clearance into their home and allowing safety to move forward with their families. So our CDBG funding is an intricate part in how we can fund those programs as a whole. We're able to apply for funding in other areas as well, so we can capitalize and use multiple sources of funding to bring the best outcome available for the homeownership. So I want to thank you for your funding, and I hope that we can continue working together in the future.
Is there anyone else deserving to be heard? Very well. This public hearing will remain open through most of the meeting, so we'll come back to that again. Approval of the meeting minutes from January 13th available?
Yep.
January 13th this year, we have a sponsor. Counselor Kent, everybody, Counselor Cuddy. Discussion, corrections, please call the roll.
Counselor Kent.
Yes.
Counselor Janatino.
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy.
Yes.
Counselor LaCastro.
Yes.
Mayor Quill.
Aye.
Carry.
Our meeting minutes from January 24th will be on next week's agenda, Council. Dugger, city manager's report?
Mayor, I don't have anything prepared for tonight. Actually, most of the things I would cover will be covered in the presentation a little bit later.
Very good. Thank you. Reports from members of council? Very well. Announcing your ordinances, local law number one of 2022. Enacting the adoption of Section 458-B of the Real Property Tax Law, providing for Cold War veterans exemption from real property taxes and elimination of the 10-year limit. This is the first reading, Council.
Thanks, Mayor. This is on for first reading tonight. This will be back before the council a couple times in the month of February, but this gets the process started for a local law number one of 2022, whereas the state of New York has enacted legislation, Section 458A of the Real Property Tax Law, authorizing an exemption from real property taxes for real property owned by persons who rendered military service to the United States during declared periods of wartime. And whereas the state of New York has enacted legislation, Section 458B of the Real Property Tax Law, authorizing an exemption from real property taxes for real property owned by a person who rendered military service to the United States during the Cold War, defined as September 2nd, 1945 to December 26th, 1991, provided such property meets the requirements set forth in the law. And whereas on March 28th, 1991, the City of Auburn adopted local law number two of 1991, enacting the adoption of the veterans exemption pursuant to RPTL Section 458A, which allowed for veterans of certain defiant theaters of war to apply for a property tax exemption. And whereas on January 3rd, 2013, the City of Auburn adopted local law number two of 2013, enacting the adoption of the Cold War exemption pursuant to RPTL Section 458B, which expanded the class of individuals able to seek an exemption, and at that time, the exemption carried a 10-year term limit. And whereas the New York State Real Property Tax Law, Section 458B, has since been amended to allow a local option to eliminate the 10-year term limit. And whereas New York State Real Property Tax Law, Section 458A and B, have since then been amended to expand the application of the exemptions to apply to LGBTQ+ veterans who were less than honorably discharged based on their status. And whereas it would be beneficial if the City of Auburn were to opt to eliminate this 10-year limit and expand the class of veterans eligible for the exemption. And whereas local law number one of 2022, attached here to and incorporated herein, proposes to update Chapter 265 of the City Code to achieve such goals, whereas the passage of local law number one of 2022 is categorized as a Type II action pursuant to the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act and New York State Code, Rules and Regulations, Section 617.5(c)(16), and therefore pursuant to the NYCRR, Section 617.3f, a determination under seeker is not required. Whereas, subject to council approval, a public hearing will be held on February 17th, 2022, concerning the repealing of sections of local law number two of 1991. Now therefore being enacted, that the Auburn City Council does hereby repeal the following sections of local law number two of 1991, which is originally passed as Chapter 182 of the City Code entitled Veterans Exemption I, Article 3, Section 26524. Be it enacted, be it further enacted, the Auburn City Council does hereby adopt local law number one of 2022, attached and incorporated herein, which replaces the following articles and sections of Chapter 265 of the Auburn City Code entitled Veterans Exemption I, Article 3, Sections 26524A, and II, Article 3, Sections 26524B. Be it further enacted, that the foregoing repeal and adoption shall take effect immediately upon the filing of a certified copy of the local law with the New York Secretary of State. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. And we have for both two weeks?
Throughout the month of February, beyond for the public hearing, February 17th, and then final action by the council the following week.
Thank you. Agreement Resolution Number 17 of 2022, authorizing the settlement, sharing agreement and release with defendant Legron relating to the opioid litigation. We have a sponsor. To Janatino, to Counselor LaCastro.
Agreement Resolution Number 17 of 2022, whereas the City of Auburn is engaged in pending litigation entitled The City of Auburn versus Purdue Pharma LP, as part of its effort to seek legal relief for damages resulting from the opioid addiction crisis. And whereas the action is against several defendants, including manufacturers of opioids, distributors of opioids, and chain pharmacies, and whereas the action alleges several causes of action against defendants Allergan Finance LLC and Allergan Limited, herein referred to as Allergan, based on claims that the Allergan contributed to the opioid epidemic by failing to comply with their obligations to implement adequate measures to prevent diversion of the prescription opioids they distributed to pharmacies and others, all of which contributed to a public health crisis of the City of Auburn. And whereas the parties have now reached a proposed settlement with defendant Allergan pursuant to a settlement sharing agreement and release, which are attached here to and incorporated herein. And whereas pursuant to the proposed settlement, the City of Auburn will receive financial payment for the damages from this particular defendant, and the settlement also includes injunctive relief, which restrains Allergan or its affiliates from manufacturing, selling, promoting, or lobbying for opioids for 10 years. And whereas it is in the best interest of the City of Auburn to resolve and settle its case with respect to Allergan without further litigation and enter into a proposed settlement sharing agreement and release in order to avoid protracted litigation. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Auburn City Council does hereby approve the settlement sharing agreement and release between the City of Auburn and Allergan, which are attached here to and incorporated herein. Be it further resolved, the attorneys Napoli, PLLC, acting on behalf of the City of Auburn, are hereby authorized to sign the settlement sharing agreement and release, together with any and all documents, in order to finalize and carry out the resolution.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor.
Mr. Dugger, Corporation Council, do you have anything to add?
Thank you, Mayor. So in 2019, the city joined a class action litigation that is seeking damages for what our community has suffered from this epidemic. This is one of several settlements. We, my office, actually came to counsel with another settlement at the end of last year. This is another one, because there are so many defendants, and there will be so many settlements, we expect there to be more. This is different than the one that was presented in the fall, because it's a lump sum, one-time payment, half of which will be available for unrestricted use, and half of it will be subject to certain allowed uses for spending. It is time-sensitive, which is why we ask that it be put on before council this evening.
Counselor Cuddy, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So according to the Corporation Council, this is the second of this type of settlement that has come before us, correct?
Correct.
And are there any conditions by us accepting this, or, you know, the acceptance of this? Does this mean that they, these companies are free of any litigation? Just to kind of, because I think I brought this up last time, is, you know, the damage that these companies have done, you know, we really can't put a price tag on throughout this country and these, and our communities. And does this mean that there could be no legal action if these are accepted? I just want to know what the terms are, because if I understand correctly, there was a judge that basically, at some point, I think referring to Purdue Pharma, did come back and like, put a stop to the moving forward of this kind of litigation. I just want to kind of give an overall perspective, if you may.
So something that I appreciated about this particular settlement is that there's injunctive relief attached to it, so it's not simply just the money. They are actually, as a part of this settlement, this particular defendant, they are actually, we've been advised by the council for the city that they're actually already out of business, but even, even putting that aside, that they are going, they will be restrained from any sort of manufacturing, selling, promoting, any lobbying for opioids for a minimum of 10 years. So that's part of the settlement, which I think goes to your concern. There is a release as a part of this litigation. That's normal for all settlements. But I think the monetary damages coupled with the injunction is key, and it's important. So, because it drives it the point of their future conduct.
Is there a timeframe? I probably, you probably can't answer this. How many more litigations are like this that are coming our way, just to kind of get a sense of the scope?
So I would need to speak with our council on that and get more specific detail for you, because it is significant, the number of defendants that are involved in this, as in any class action, the number of plaintiffs and defendants is significant. So this particular settlement is specific to New York only. It's not nationwide, so that also makes it a little bit different, but I can get you more detail on what's remaining. It's going to be lengthy and continue, so.
But the really big, mostly well-known, the most well-known would be Purdue, correct?
Correct. And that's, and like I said, with some of the larger defendants, we're looking at, you know, years.
That's what I figured.
Litigation. This is a much smaller piece.
Okay. Great. Thank you. I'll say.
Counselor Janatino?
Thank you, Mayor. I share Counselor Cuddy's concerns. While it's important that we be financially compensated for what has occurred, I think it's more important that they be held morally and legally accountable. I know this is the second settlement that we have received, and reading this one, it's not a lot of money. Half of it is restricted, and there's stipulations in what it can be spent on. Half is unrestricted. I would ask that that unrestricted money be spent on something related to this epidemic in our community, whether it be what's in the Schedule D outline or not, but some, whether it's a program with APD, Auburn Fire Department, just that it goes towards correcting this issue in our community. Thank you.
Anyone else? No further discussion. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Counselor Kent.
Yes.
Counselor Janatino.
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy.
Yes.
Counselor LaCastro.
Yes.
Mayor Quill.
Aye.
Carry.
Council Resolution Number 18 of 2022, requesting that New York State Governor Hochul and all New York State representatives acknowledge emergency medical services EMS providers as essential healthcare providers, and include EMS in their final New York State budget. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Janatino, to Counselor LaCastro.
Council Resolution 18 of 2022, whereas the City of Auburn and communities all across New York State rely on emergency medical services to provide essential pre-hospital care to our sick and injured neighbors as part of comprehensive healthcare system. Whereas EMS agencies have struggled for years to maintain financially viable operations in order to provide fair and appropriate compensation to the individuals providing these vital services. And whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has placed unprecedented stress on the entire healthcare system, including our EMS systems. And whereas on January 18th, 2022, New York State Governor Kathy Hochul presented an executive budget for 2023. And whereas the proposed budget includes a number of considerations for healthcare workers, facilities, and agencies intended to improve recruitment and retention of essential healthcare workers, and to provide the necessary funding to support community health. And whereas the proposed budget includes funding to support innovative solutions to streamline healthcare, and whereas the proposed budget considers adjustments to Medicaid reimbursements, and whereas Medicaid reimbursements have long lagged behind the actual cost of providing EMS services, creating an unreasonable burden on EMS providers. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Auburn City Council does hereby request that New York State Governor Kathy Hochul and all New York State representatives continue to fully support and fund the essential healthcare provisions of the proposed executive budget, and to acknowledge EMS workers and agencies as part of the healthcare system. Be it further resolved, the Auburn City Council does hereby request that New York State Governor Kathy Hochul and all New York State representatives make the necessary adjustments to Medicaid reimbursements, so that local EMS agencies can continue their vital work and compensate their dedicated employees with fair wages and benefits. Be it further resolved, the city clerk shall forward certified copies of the resolution to the governor and our state representatives.
Mr. Dugger, I realize we have both our futures. Is there anything to yourself or do you would like to add?
Yeah, Mayor and councilors, as I reviewed the governor's executive budget proposal for 2023, there certainly is a lot of discussion, a lot of highlights in it related to our healthcare system. Most of that, when you listen to the narrative about it, focuses on healthcare facilities such as hospitals and nursing homes and things like that, which absolutely are important aspects of our, all of our communities across New York State. But one of the things that tends to get left off in conversations and has for years is the delivery of emergency medical services, including ambulance services. Especially over the last two years, we can certainly see it here in our community, that much of the community relies on emergency medical services as their first, their first line of choice, or their first choice, their immediate choice when they have a medical problem. Whether or not that's, should be the case or not, they've become the de facto primary care for a lot of folks in our community. And we have seen over the course of the last couple of years, especially difficulty all across the country, all across the world, getting people into healthcare positions like EMTs and paramedics. So we are seeing that in real time right now. It's being experienced all across New York State, and we don't want to see the EMS system forgotten as we have discussions about improving working conditions and compensation for those in healthcare field. Chief Hertz has got anything to add to that? If you're more than welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, councilors. I'll just reiterate what the city manager said.
I'll just reiterate what the city manager said. I came from EMS a long, long time ago. It has always been a proud service, but it has always been a service that has fallen behind in benefits and wages. The work and the hours are long, and unfortunately, the compensation really doesn't reflect the dedication that these EMTs and paramedics put in. So that's kind of why we wrote this resolution to send to the Governor, just as a reminder that, you know, there's frontline healthcare workers every day that are out there working hard, putting their life on the line, whether it be violence-related or this pandemic, and we do want to make sure that they are part of the conversation moving forward, and they get the acknowledgement of the essential service they truly are.
Counsel, discussion?
So I, I agree that EMS workers are critically important. I'm so glad to see this, and, you know, they're not only our default, you know, primary providers when there's an emergency, but they also are by default ambassadors for the city and for the healthcare system and the communities they serve, so it's a lot of responsibility. They have no idea what they're walking into most of the time, so I'm glad to see it supported.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please call the roll in regards to Council Resolution Number 18, please.
Counselor Kent.
Yes.
Counselor Janatino.
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy.
Yes.
Counselor Castro.
Yes.
Mayor.
Aye.
Carry.
Before we move along to our presentations, our public hearing is still open. Is there anyone who's armed to speak in regards to the public hearing? Very well, move along to the first item. Jenny, as I, as I understand it, Chris Trivissanti is not able to make it this evening, and your office is going to do it, very good, thank you.
They're going to reschedule.
Okay.
So now it'll be us, this next vote.
So go along to this. We have too many changes and cancellations, it's tough for me to keep up, so. 2022, 2023, CDBG Annual Action Plan Presentation by Renee Jensen, Senior Planner, and Tiffany Beebe, Senior Planner, so, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Renee Jensen, Senior Planner with the City of Auburn Planning Department, and with me tonight, we have, from our department, Gretchen Messer, Planner, Tiffany Beebe, Senior Planner, and our Director, Jennifer Haynes. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present the Community Development Block Grant 2022 to 2023 Annual Action Plan. The Annual Action Plan provides city council, community members, and our funder, HUD, with the framework of how we are going to spend funding over the next year. It was included in council packets, it's also found on the city website, and for anybody who would like a hard copy, it's also found in the planning department on the second floor of City Hall. So to begin... Sorry about that. I'd like to emphasize how important community input is on the development of the Annual Action Plan. In October and November, we go out and we hold a number of community meetings, we also have public hearings, and distribute a community survey throughout the community. In January and February, we also have a public comment period that allows the public to comment on the draft Annual Action Plan before us tonight. The comment period is open till February 3, which is next Thursday, and any and all comments are part of the Annual Action Plan. In fact, it's written in the narrative portions as well as the appendix. And I thought it was very important to include some of our community input, so here in front of us, we have a question directly from our survey, which we got well over 200 responses of this year, I think it was around 225, but for this question, we focused on area-wide projects, so that is projects within areas that are eligible for CDBG funding. As you can see here, there were five areas we asked the public for their prioritization on, and neighborhood revitalization ranked as number one, sewer and water line improvements number two, sidewalk improvements as third, park improvements as fourth, and demolitions as a fifth priority. Another question that we asked, we're on direct benefit programs, so these are programs that are run typically by human service agencies and housing agencies, but directly impact people of low to moderate income. I'm not going to run through all of the different eligible programs, but I'll just highlight the top five that came in as priorities by community input, and the first priority was youth programming, second being homeless prevention, third, senior services, fourth, substance abuse, and fifth, mental health. So both of these questions are very important in our development of the action plan and how we distribute funding through our different activities as we move into 2022. So speaking of our budget, here is our proposed budget according to goals within the action plan. So our goals include community development support services, housing and special development, economic development, administration, and public improvements, and I'll get a little more into detail of the specific activities that we'll fund through these goals, but when we're outlining, excuse me, when we're outlining the proposed budget, what we do is we use our previous year's entitlement funding, because we don't, we don't actually know our entitlement amount until about April or May. So as we develop the action plan, we use our previous entitlement amount, and we used $889,803 for this action plan. But then additionally, as we develop with the budget, we also use previous entitlement funding and our revolving loan funds. So in the appendix of the action plan, we have a more detailed budget, as you can see here, and it outlines what our anticipated entitlement amount is, our prior year funds, and where they're going to be distributed, and then our revolving loan funds. And I did mention that, you know, we're anticipating $889,803. HUD does awards based on a formula, and that formula does, the funding that comes out of that does shift every year, so if we happen to receive more funding, we did put in the action plan that that would go towards parks improvements. If we happen to receive less funding, we did mention that staff will review the budget and determine where to make cuts. However, I will state, if any budget line is changed by 20% or more, that triggers an amendment and will have to be back in front of council for approval. So now I'm going to touch on each of the goals that you saw earlier, and within those goals are activities that we fund. So first, we'll talk about community development support services. We funded this at $130,000 for the 2022, 2023 year. We are capped at spending 15% of our entitlement funds in this line, so we really can't go more than $130,000 for this upcoming year. This year was an open competitive year, so we did a request for proposals, so human service agencies that had programs that fell within HUD's eligibility guidelines, applied for funding. We had an application review committee of five community members review the applications, and then they listened to each agency, do a presentation, and then the application review committee recommended funding, and that funding is before you tonight, and so I'll just quickly go through what programs are recommended for this upcoming year. And the way these are outlined are according to community prioritization, because that is one way that we review applications, is based on community input. So if you remember, youth services was the top direct benefit priority, so we have Rescue Mission, youth programming within Merriman Village, Arise Sibling Shops, Booker T. Washington Summer Youth Program, John Gaver Center Daycare Coordinator Position, Kyuga Counseling, Mental Health for Youth, and Sleep in Heavenly Peace, which was for beds for youth. Secondly, we had homeless services as a second priority within our community input, and this year we'll be funding Chapel House for Case Manager Position, community action programs for homeless prevention. This program includes rental assistance and security deposits, Catholic charities for rental assistance. And then the third priority listed in community input was for senior services, which includes Aurora of CNY. This program provides seniors with aids, hearing aids and visual aids, SCAT van for transportation for seniors and persons with disabilities, Boyle Senior Center for senior programming, and then also within the priority list was legal representation for victims of domestic violence and workforce development. This is a new program funded this year, it's BOSI's Health Train Program. So those are the 14 agencies that will be awarded funding for this upcoming year. Okay, the second goal we have is housing programs, which is funded at $399,182, and includes activities such as home repair, mortgage assistance, home access, and distress property program. The Home Repair Assistance Program and the Mortgage Assistance Program is administered by HomeSite, which Erica Ryan spoke earlier on, and they do a fantastic job. This coming year, we have funding for Home Repair Assistance Program for $256,082. This particular program is a combination loan grant for low to moderate income homeowners within the City of Auburn, and typically addresses roofs, electrical plumbing, emergency situations such as furnaces, and water and sewer line replacements. Just have a quick, some pictures of before and after projects that we've done with home repair. There are currently nine units underway with CDBG funding, and we anticipate 10 units will be addressed in program year 2022.
10 additional, 10 additional units.
Yep, yep, 10 new projects. The Mortgage Assistance Program, for 2022, we're looking at $24,000. This program provides grants that can be used towards closing costs. The home buyers must be City of Auburn, and they must take a home buyer's education class and be approved for a mortgage. The grants are up to $4,000, and for this coming year, we would be anticipating six grants. This past year, we completed four, and I think one is underway currently. The Home Access Program for this coming year will be funded at $25,000. Arise administers this program, and in a typical year, they've done four to five projects, which the program addresses accessibility barriers within homes for people with disabilities. Typically, we see a lot of ramps, but other projects have included bathroom modifications and also chair lifts. This year, we're anticipating seven projects. The Distress Property Program, this program addresses properties that are in extreme distress. We can do that a couple of ways. One way is through demolition. This past year, we were able to couple CDBG funding with city funds, and we demolished 71 Wall Street shown here, and also 22 Perrine Street, which is known as the Auburn Cement Factory, and 25 Cottage Street. We do have funds for the upcoming year, but this problem, this program also includes our acquisition rehab program, so we are able to do substantial rehabilitation under the Distress Property Program. Erica spoke on this program earlier. The Distress Property Program is run through HomeSite, and acquires homes, substantially rehabs them, and sells them to income-eligible families for a very reasonable price. So 89 Walnut Street, we did have an open house in November, and it was officially listed this week on a Realtor site, so it is for sale currently. The city is also discussing a partnership with Habitat for Humanity.
Renee, we have a question.
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, Ms. Jensen, so I saw the house listed, or not listed, but I saw the for-sale sign on the house.
Yes.
So the Realtor, is that somebody, is that a group that is related to HomeSite, or is it an independent Realtor? I just kind of want to get a sense of, of the process, because as I've mentioned here on the floor, you know, interest in, in continuing to do what started through the CDBG program, and using some of the COVID relief funding for similar kinds of incentives of rehabbing and possibly encouraging more homeownership. So can you tell me a little bit about, do you know the Realtor and what the relationship is between these, these homes, and that to assure that they're going to families that, you know, meet the criteria for, for this?
Absolutely, yes. So CDBG is just a small portion of the total funding that was used to purchase the home. I think our funding was about $20,000 if I'm correct, and Home Headquarters is HomeSite's sister company, and Home Headquarters acquires a property, and they rehab it, and then they also have a Realtor that lists it. So I looked at the site today, and in the description, it clearly says, you know, families must income-qualify, so any families viewing the home will have to fill out an application through Home Headquarters and be verified through that process.
Great, great. Again, to me, I'm looking at, you know, things that the city is already doing, the partnerships that the city's already made, as possible avenues to see how we can expand this with the ARPA, you know, resources, and again, making sure that it's known that the city is using the money for these kinds of incentives for single-family houses, homeownership, the kinds of things that we have been talking about over the last few weeks. So I didn't mean to interrupt your presentation.
Yeah, no problem, and I actually have the breakdown of the costs and everything, so we can, we can also have a discussion around how the program, a more detailed discussion on how the program worked, too.
Great, thank you.
Renee, before you go back on track, is there anything from preventing the first-time buyer, whatever, from turning it over within a short period of time?
For her...
For example, the, a possible homeowner is going to... For example, the, a possible homeowner is going to purchase this at a great price with a lot of conditions. But could they turn around within 60, 90 days and sell it to someone at a much higher price? They cannot do that.
No. Oh, for the Mortgage Assistance Program? Or for this Acquisition Rehab Program?
For example, this home right here, this for sale right now. If Mr. Mason purchased it, is there anything preventing him from turning around and selling it within a month?
Um, so the.
I think Ms. Ryan.
The Mortgage Assistance Program does prevent that, yes. We actually have.
Mr. Mason's wallpaper, he could take care of it.
Yes, no, we do have, and Erica can expand, but we do have certain clauses within the funding that prevents that.
Mayor, just so that you're aware, with all of the funding that goes into these properties such as this, we do have a recapture period, what we call. It could be anywhere from five years to 10 years and further upward if there's more funding put into it. But I have to annually do an audit and make sure that the property is still owned by the same homeowner. And if not, then the funds would be recaptured unless they were to then forward it on to another first-time eligible homeowner.
Which makes sense, but instead of having a landlord pick up two or three of his own.
Yeah, yeah, we definitely, we, yeah, we don't market it that way.
Counselor Kess.
Do you inspect the property also to so it doesn't end up the same way that it started?
We do, yes. Oh, but once it's purchased by the homeowner?
Yeah.
We do not, no. If it is a rental type of unit, we do, but in this case, no. No, once it's owned, once it's owned by the homeowner, they would just be obligated to meet code. Yeah, that's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Erica. The city is also discussing a partnership with Habitat for Humanity for acquiring homes for substantial rehab and then selling to an eligible family as well. So that's our Distress Property Program. Moving on to Public Improvements, this goal is funded at $515,000 and includes sidewalks and curbing, street tree program and neighborhood park improvements. The Neighborhood Sidewalk and Curb Program, this past year focused on the West Side and North Division Street from Case Ave and Perrine Street. And with 2022 funding, we're going to finish up on Case Ave and then move right over to Chase Street where we will focus on sidewalks and curbing there. The Street Tree Program is a newer program that will be funded this year through CDBG. This program is based on the city's Community Forest Management Plan, which was funded by a New York State DEC grant in January of '21. Street trees will be planted in CDBG-eligible areas and based on the management plan recommendations.
Ms. Johnson, is this, is this in addition to our annual tree program?
Yes, yes, absolutely. For Neighborhood Park Improvements, we funded this at $300,000, this action plan. And last year, we focused on Bradford Park and we also had some funding for 1-7 State Street. And we started the Casey Park Skate Park. We were able to secure a designer and hold a community meeting, which right now is currently under the design phase. And CDBG, as well as New York State Parks Funding that was awarded in December of '21, we will be moving forward with the construction of the skate park this year. Economic Development. For this goal, we have $236,085. And this includes Small Business Assistance Program and our Micro Enterprise Program, which for the upcoming year, we have $206,785. And that will be available for small business funding. And the Small Business Assistance Program, it provides gap financing to businesses that can commit to the creation or retention of jobs for low to moderate income individuals. This past year, we were able to support Quilts by Commission and Feast Kitchen.
Ms. Johnson?
Yep.
Out of that funding, are there limits to how much a specific business or person can apply for?
Well, with our current revolving loan fund, $206,000 doesn't go very far, but they can apply and that is reviewed. This program, as well as our Micro Enterprise Program, is administered by Kyuga Economic Development Agency. So they receive the applications, review them, and then we also do have a loan committee that meets and reviews the application and approves the funding.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Ms. Johnson.
Yep.
I just, so there's two avenues to get funding. One is the loan program and I believe that's the $5,000. There's the Micro Enterprise Loan and then there's the Small Business Assistance Program. Both, they're two separate things, correct?
They are, yes.
And they, and one, and they both go through committee? Is there like, both have committees that determine? Or is one just an application and there's kind of a thumbs up, thumbs down? And the other goes through some kind of review? Is that correct?
Yes, yeah. So I actually have Meg Golub with us tonight and she's going to be presenting an update on the Micro Enterprise Program.
Okay.
So we'll definitely get into more details with that. But, so for Small Business Assistance Program, this is a larger loan program that is able to assist small businesses. Whereas the Micro Enterprise Program, that is a $5,000 grant for Micro Enterprise Programs. So it is a different process.
So for the Small Business Assistance Program, is there a formula for, say, a business? What kind of guidelines is the committee that determines who gets the funding? What kind of guidelines, is there a formula, I guess a ratio based on, you know, what their funding is, what other funding they may be getting towards their business? And what kind of projected revenue? Is there, is there a formula or is it more kind of like?
Yes, so all of that is taken in during the application process. So everything is reviewed from financials to projected income. A business plan is created and presented and reviewed. So CETA staff works very, very closely with the businesses prior to it going to the committee even. Do you have any?
Yep. Also, for every $25,000 of funding, it is written into our guidelines that a job for a low to moderate income individual must either be created or retained.
Okay. I just, I just wanted to, is there a way, the reason why I bring up the concept of a formula is I'm just thinking of like certain standards to keep it, I guess, consistent or more transparent. I know that there's at least an interest to just kind of keep, to keep it more open and transparent. So that's all I was reading when I looked through, when I looked through that, this specific program.
Okay, yep. Yeah, so we can certainly dive into that more if you'd like. I can bring Jenny up. She's very familiar with the program and also serves on the loan committee, actually.
Thank you. So there are no specific hard and fast guidelines, like for a manufacturer, there's a certain amount of money, or for a restaurant, there's a certain amount of money. And what's taken into consideration really is project need. So the loan program is gap financing. So it's supposed to be funding of last resort. So the company, the company comes in, they have, you know, a certain amount of money from a bank. They have a certain amount of money that's their own equity. And then there's a gap. And that's where they come in. And so they have to say, "City of Auburn, unless we can, we can borrow this money from you, we aren't going to be able to do our project. And if you lend this money to us, we will create X number of jobs, 51% of which will be available to lower or moderate income individuals." And so, you know, CETA goes through that whole process with them, you know, monitors the loan afterwards to make sure that those objectives are met. Because, you know, for CDBG, as you know, we have to make sure we're benefiting low and moderate income individuals. So that's how it works with our economic development programs. So they go through that process. You know, we do have a loan committee. It's made up of some city representatives, the mayor, the city manager, the comptroller, I'm their staff. We also have bankers and accountants that are part of the loan committee. So CETA brings that package together, they underwrite it. They make sure the projections make sense, that the debt service for the bank and us can be paid and that the project can be successful.
But there are no, as you had mentioned earlier, no hard or hard and fast guidelines?
Right. So we used to, back in the day, so to speak, we used to have, you know, some set things for, you know, restaurants, set things for manufacturers. But the way that, the way that things are right now, it's sometimes with community development, you have to have a little bit more flexible approach and be able to make, take a little bit higher risk with a business in order to make it happen. So that's, you know, the, even though we have some, some folks on the committee that are very dedicated to looking at the numbers, we also understand that there needs to be flexibility with that. So we make sure it's good, we make sure that we're confident we're going to get repaid. But we might have some terms that are flexible upfront, like interest-only payments to start, longer term, things like that. Making sure that the collateral matches what the term would be.
Yes, so I guess that, Ms. Haines, that helps a lot. And I think like, as we move forward, and I know that in this time, especially the last two years have been very unique when it comes to all aspects of life and business. I also think like, given that flexibility, I also think there is value in just kind of, just being more, or at least having, I know you're saying that you need, there needs to be flexibility, but having more, I guess, awareness at the time that these applications are going. I'm not thinking like a public hearing because I don't, I think that slows things down perhaps. But at least more like knowing more about like the terms or the, I just, more transparency, I guess.
So we can certainly work through that. I did have a discussion with, with the city clerk the other day about this idea, about how to make people, make the public, the council, more aware of what is happening with this program. The loan committee is an advisory committee for the program. So it is not something that we've had in public or livestreamed or anything like that. The, the information that they discuss is confidential, personal financial information, things that would not be appropriate to discuss in public. But we for sure are very open, I'm sure CETA would be open to any discussion about how we can shed some more light on it so that the council and the public can be, you know, more aware or engaged or understand more about what happens with these loans, other than, you know, us presenting them, you know, in CDBG updates.
Yes, and, and, you know, and if like, because I do see light at the end of the tunnel as far as, you know, the pandemic.
Awesome.
But perhaps even maybe reinstituting some of the guidelines and, and, you know, just to kind of keep things in, you know, in a proportionate manner as far as, you know, borrowing versus, you know, projected revenue and so on. So that's, that's just, but I know things have been interesting the last couple of years.
Right, right. Totally happy to work on that. You know, we could do a work session if you want to do it formally or we could have a couple counselors and CETA and us sit down and kind of work through some ideas. Whatever you'd like to see, we're happy to do that. You know, we want to, this, we're stewards of this money, it's public money. We need to make sure that people are comfortable with the way it's distributed. So absolutely.
And I mean, just to be clear, you know, having been on council for, for eight years, I see CDBG as one of the assets of this. I'm lucky, we're lucky that we have this, this money coming to the city because it does so much good. And, and I just want to make sure that, you know, we're doing everything we can to, you know, show the people and the federal government that we're, you know, and it's such a successful program. So I, you know, because as we, as we are utilizing this money, I'm still, I'm still thinking about how we're going to leverage the ARPA money with, because I see CDBG as the blueprint for how this ARPA money may be spent, you know, in the upcoming, you know, months and year. So that's basically what I'm trying to get at with, you know, not just this program, but just, you know, with, with our partnership with HomeSite, Habitat for Humanity. There's, the blueprints are there and I just want to make sure that we're tightening up all the, the elements so that we can, you know, be confident that as we invest in, you know, human services and, you know, homeownership and small business, that we're totally got it, got it right for ARPA. So that's all I'm trying to say. But I'm, you know, but thank you, thank you.
Absolutely. And just a really quick update on ARPA. We are actually, Danielle and I were just talking today. They are getting ready to ramp up and roll out that ARPA small business funding. So we should see that application out there within probably the next few weeks. So we'll start seeing, you know, some of the marketing for that upfront. So we'll make sure the council sees that.
That's good news, thank you.
So our Micro Enterprise Grant Program for 2022, we have $25,000 set aside for. And this will offer five businesses a grant of $5,000 for their microenterprises. And as I mentioned, Meg Golub from CETA is here. So she'll be jumping in and giving you an update on this program right after our CDBG presentation. Administration is the last goal that we'll cover and that's within the Annual Action Plan. And this goal is funded at $156,503. This line is also capped. HUD caps us at 20% of our entitlement funding for administration costs. So administration includes any program oversight, so salary reimbursement for staff that have direct hours administering CDBG. This includes many of us in the Planning Department, Engineering, Department of Public Works. Also, I am Chair of the Homeless Task Force, so it reimburses all time according to that. We also fund for fair housing, education and outreach as well as landlord-tenant trainings through our administration line. And finally, Catalyst Kyuga for coordination and training of services among human service agencies. So that is the conclusion of our Community Development Black Grant Annual Action Plan. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Not so much questions, but a couple of comments. And I really want to piggyback on some of the things that Counselor Cuddy just said. And really recognize yourself, Ms. Beebe, Ms. Haynes, and the entire department for the administration of this program. You know, Counselor Cuddy mentioned we're lucky to have this. You look at, and we're going to see in the next presentation with Parks, Master. You look at, and we're going to see, in the next presentation with Park's master plan, how vital this funding has been to the parks in this community. I don't care what your political persuasion is, you can always argue that there's too much government spending on certain things and, you know, abusive money. This is the opposite of that. And, you know, five years ago, this program was on the chopping block. And we mobilized with other communities, we fought, we saved it. And every year, we just see the good that it does, that the fact that the very people who need it the most and are impacted by this spending the most have an opportunity to come to us and give comments on what they feel it should be spent on. The fact that our community partners are coming here and really echoing that we're spending it where it needs to be spent. I feel we're fortunate to have it, I feel we're fortunate to have the staff that we have to administer it. And I just hope the community realizes that too, so thank you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for your support of this program.
Was it five years ago we went to Washington? Seems like it was yesterday, but it was, it was, it was a long day, but it was well worth the trip for everything we received since then, so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I'm going to invite Meg Golub from Kyuga Economic Development Agency to provide an update on the micro enterprise program.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. As Renee said, my name is Meg Golub, and I am the Small Business Development Specialist at SITA. And we had a pilot program for the micro enterprise in January of 2021. And when we did an assessment of that program, it seemed to be successful. So we launched a second round in the fall. We made some changes to the program. It originally ran at eight sessions, we bumped it up to twelve because we saw that the participants needed a little extra, particularly in the areas of financial literacy and soft skills, things like time management and clear communication. So we bumped that into the program. Other changes that we added to the second round was we created Saturday working sessions. A lot of these entrepreneurs struggle with technology, they don't have computers at home. And so they were falling behind in being able to complete their homework and work on their business plan and their pro formas. So we held two Saturday working sessions where SCORE generously let us use their laptops. And so we had laptops available and mentors available to work with them during the day on Saturday, which improved their access and their ability to complete the program. We also added more mentoring hours. It was limited last time to eight hours over the course of the program. We bumped that up to twelve, basically one for each educational session. That mentoring is done with SITA staff, SCORE volunteers, community partners. And what that does is it allows the small business, in this case, we had all entrepreneurs, it gives them that hands-on guidance that they need. It's all well and good to sit in a class and try to absorb all that information, but there's a lot of questions unique to their particular business concept. So we sit down, we mentor, we go over the business plans, we go over the pro formas. We do a lot of soft skills training, too. We're kind of there to get them over the edge. And as I said, the program completes with a complete business plan and a set of three-year pro forma, which is a projection of three years of business. In this particular round, all five of the grant-eligible participants were entrepreneurs. The program is open to startups of two years and under, but in this round, they were all entrepreneurs. So we really did delve into pure business concepting. This time, we had quite a diverse group of folks. We had lingerie retail, we had student athlete recruiting services. We have a women's outreach program. We had a cat-centric pet boutique, which was one of my favorites. And we also have a family arcade. So what we do is we work with these entrepreneurs to build out the concept, finish the business plan, and try to create realistic pro formas for these business concepts. So we do believe, again, that this was a successful round. The city is currently reviewing the assessments and the applications, pending their final opinion on this. We do hope to grant all five $5,000 grants for this round. So if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Meg, thank you very much for presenting. What does a potential applicant need to bring to you in the very beginning?
Sure. So basically, there's an application, and the only requirements for the applicant, they must be a resident of the City of Auburn. They must meet the low to moderate income requirement. And then there are other factors that we scale their application on. They are weighted towards minorities, females, service, not necessarily service-disabled, but veteran businesses. So the, the application is weighted to favor those applicants. They have to come prepared with a business idea. They can't just come to me and say, I want to start a business. They really do have to have some thought into their concept. And some of these entrepreneurs actually were quite far along in their business concept, but they had never formalized the business plan, and they had never actually gained revenue making the business. In the pilot round, we actually did have a couple of true startups. And their businesses were already out there, but they kind of just started a business. And so we went back and we backfilled good business practice. They still had to write a business plan, even though they were in business. They still had to do pro formas even though they were in business. Because the concept of the program is that it takes a really good foundation to keep a small business in business. We all know that the failure rate of small businesses is very high. And part of that is because a lot of entrepreneurs don't fully recognize the scope of what their startup cost is, nor how to project their income and expenses in the future. So we try to fill that foundation, and one of the things that I always mentor on is, you cannot build a building on quicksand. So we're building a strong foundation here, and that's really the goal of the program. An interesting side effect of the program is that it helps us as an agency see where these small businesses need help. And one of the things that we are discovering every time we have one of these rounds is what are the common things that these small businesses are encountering that are roadblocks? And so SITA as an agency can go to the city and say, hey, you know, I think we need legal service clinics, or maybe we need a technology program. It allows us as a supporting agency to figure out what other services should we be looking at for these small businesses.
Thank you.
I have more of a, of a comment. I, like all the other programs that were mentioned earlier by Ms. Jensen, Ms. Golub, I've worked with you in my capacity as the graphic design and new media teacher at Bozies. And I've had the pleasure of working with past recipients of micro, the micro enterprise loans. And the work that you do to prepare these individuals for, for business and the, the kind of rapport that my students have had with, with them, it's a, a very worthwhile program, and I'm very happy to see, you know, continue to be funded by the city and, and the partnership continuing. So, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Jensen, are you done?
I am.
All right, very well. Our Parks Master Plan update, just be, 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 just be welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to provide an update on the Parks Master Plan adopted in 2016. The Parks Master Plan process began in 2015 with a partnership between the Office of Planning and Economic Development and SUNY College of Environmental Science and Forestry. A team of landscape architecture students led by project director Marin King solicited and organized community input on the city's park system. They then analyzed this information to provide recommendations. The Parks Master Plan is a plan with multiple purposes: to guide maintenance and investments, to engage the community in planning and implementation, and to communicate the value of parks and how they positively support the city. The vision and goal statements for our park system were developed from the responses received during the community input process, consisting of workshops, a questionnaire available both hard copy and online, and two open house sessions. The vision statement developed is, "Our Auburn parks are public places of beauty and respite, activity and healthy living, where all people feel comfortable and welcome. The design and care of our parks reflects our community pride and recognizes their vital importance to the physical, social, economic, and environmental well-being of our community." The goals developed during the Parks Master Plan process include, one, create a park system that supports the physical and mental well-being of people of all ages; two, provide care and maintenance of the parks that reinforces the desired character, supports safe and responsible use, and represents wise use of resources; three, strengthen community relationships and respectful use of parks; four, promote the value and multiple roles of parks to contribute to a resilient and sustainable community; five, ensure long-term support and resources for parks programming, maintenance, and capital improvements. On the screen, you will see a list of parks and their priority status for improvements. The green check mark next to a park name means that improvements have been completed at these parks. Many of the park improvements in the city are funded with Community Development Black Grant dollars. Sherwood, Miles Luppick, St. Francis, and Bonacore have been completed with CDBG funding. Clifford Park improvements have been funded by DASNY, which is the dormitory authority of state of New York, and the Emerson Foundation. Ongoing projects include Bradford Park and Casey Park. Bradford Park is near completion and has been fully funded with CDBG. Casey Park projects have been funded by DASNY, City Bond, and the Kyuga Community Health Network Local Impact Grant. The skate park is an ongoing project and is funded by CDBG and New York State Parks Environmental Protection Fund. No improvements have taken place at the following parks: Wall Street, Cottage Place, Seminary, Calvary, and Pomeroy. Wall Street and Cottage Place are the only CDBG-eligible parks. We are anticipating improvements at Wall Street Park in CDBG Action Plan 2023 to 2024. Also part of the Parks Master Plan is a chart of action items. Included as part of your agenda packets is a PDF of the action items and then notes on the status of each item. The city has made progress on approximately thirty-six percent of the action plan items within the master plan. Some items have been completed, such as the development of a park signage plan and continuing to engage the community in the park design process. Other items have not been completed, such as the development of a Parks Friends Group and developing an education program to highlight the importance of parks. Thank you for allowing me to update you on the Parks Master Plan, and I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Good evening, welcome. So this brings me back to, I don't know how many years it's been now, the master, the comprehensive plan that we worked on in 2009, I believe it was. We talked a lot then about, you know, our parks, our ability to use public spaces for gardens when possible. And since then, you know, I recently came across a book that's entitled "Palaces of the People," and it talks about how important it is to have structures where social interactions can happen, like libraries and parks, they talk a lot about parks. And I know it's not CDBG-eligible, but recently, the library director, Lisa Carr, mentioned that they are interested in working with the city in developing Pomeroy Park, Pathway, Walkway, they have some programs in mind. And so I, I touched base, I think it was with Jenny earlier, on that. And so I'm excited to see this and the work that's being done. And I, I know that you've touched on the comprehensive plan, and it's been a while now, and we probably should be looking at it. But this shows how much work we're doing. It's, that plan's a working document, just like the Parks Plan is a working document. So as we go along, we are checking off so many things off the list. But, so I look forward to conversations between the library and the city on what their ideas are and how we can help them, and they can help the city. But thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. We look forward to those conversations as well.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I agree with Councilor Kent that, you know, there's, you know, early on, these parks, the improvements were, were ideas. And, you know, when you go through this, all the parks that have been renovated and re, you know, replaced and, and made into basically brand-new parks, you, you, there are more parks that have been renovated than, than not. So in fact, the list is really small for ones that are, are on, are on the dock. So that's, it's just great to drive by and see brand-new parks all over the city. One of the things that I think and are part of the, the plan, this idea of, you know, developing an education program in association with school district, I think one of the things that, that I think really would, would bring everything together would be just that idea of, you know, more programming, that we do have the, the programming that, that DPW has for, for, for the, the events and different parks. One of the things that, you know, and I've, I've talked with the council and the city manager about having people at the parks, whether it be something that resembled when, when I was younger, having, you know, somebody at the park that would have, conduct games, or be like checkers. I know we can't go back in time to what it was like in the 1970s and 80s, but I do think that we can at least do some programming. And I know that there have been talks with the director of DPW, Mr. Talbot, city manager, Deigert. I know that these are in the- I know that these are in the works, but what's going to really make the plan come together is having people there where children and people from the neighborhood go to events or know that, oh, Tuesday is the day that somebody is at, you know, Clifford Park, and Wednesday the person is at Bradford Street. So I think, you know, all the great things that are happening as far as the structures that have been renovated are all going to like really, I think, have an impact on the community when there are events, programming, you know, sports activities in the various parks that we've been so diligent in renovating. So I just, I commend the planning department for all that is happening. And now the programming, you know, obviously that's in another department with Mr. Talbot, but I think it's all going to come together with some of the ideas that this council and the city manager have been beginning to make come to fruition. So thank you for laying the groundwork for all the great things that are going to be coming in the future.
Thank you.
All set, Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. One topic I'd like to talk about in regards to the parks and the park system, and it's on one of your slides, Ms. Beebe, one of the goals, ensure long-term support and resources for parks programming, which Counselor Cuddy just spoke about, maintenance and capital improvement. We've done tremendous work in the last six to eight years on the parks. I remember going to the Parks Master Plan meetings where we were at that time and where we are now. I mean, you drive by Bradford Park right now, and it doesn't even look like the same park. And that's great. And we've added the River Trail, we've added the Pocket Park, State Street Bridge, we're adding a park in the middle of downtown. All of these things require maintenance. And those folks who are tasked with that maintenance have not really been given any additional resources. So I think that's something we need to start talking about, and I know that the city manager is aware of that. We've had preliminary conversations on that coming into upcoming budget. I know it's a balance act, a balancing act between keeping the budget under control and providing those services that need to be provided, but we've invested so much money into the parks, and we have to give them the resources to maintain them. They do a great job, but it's always under the gun. And oftentimes, it's reactive. You know, somebody will call, oh, you know, this needs to be fixed, and they get right out there and they fix it. But I think we need to take a more proactive stance in there and protect our investment. So I just wanted to reiterate that. I know we have budget talks coming up, that that's something that's a priority for me in the upcoming budget.
Can I follow up with Counselor Giantino saying? I think we're saying the same thing. And again, we're moving, I guess, away from the Parks Plan as far as, you know, to more, I guess, this idea of maintenance and programming fits into what I want to say, like, the execution, the concept coming to the fore, right? Like, it's going to happen. And what I'm trying to say is, like, I think it needs some kind of branding if we're going to restart to revitalize the parks in a new way. And I think there just needs to be a shift in, and I guess, how do I want to say this? Counselor Giantino's saying and what I'm saying are the same thing in the sense that we want to see a decisive shift in how we are going to lift the parks, and that has to do with the maintenance of the parks and the programming that is going to happen. So I know that Counselor Giantino and I want to keep, you know, like, keep the budget intact, but I think as I, as I was, you know, going through the city this fall, there is a, there is a desire to have the city do more programming, the city to keep the parks, you know, cleaner. And I think that that is, you know, if we utilize, you know, the funding that we have from, you know, from various sources, ARPA, I know that I've said it a few times tonight, but that's part of how we're going to rebound from this pandemic and make Auburn the destination it needs to be, because our parks are jewels. And if we can, you know, revitalize the programming and, you know, increase the, how we maintain or change how we maintain the parks in a much more rigorous way, I think it will really have a benefit for the city.
There are some recommendations in the action items regarding maintenance, recognizing that budgets are often lean for cities. Those can be explored. It discusses building partnerships within the community and having businesses and community groups sponsor parks, having an idea of a list of projects that somebody could pick from. You know, maybe they don't want to go to the park once a week and clean it up, but maybe they would like to help clean it up, you know, at the beginning of spring or do some fall cleanup. And I know that can't be a catch-all, but if that's something that you would like explored, it does take significant staff time to pull all that together as well.
Yeah, I think that that's great for, like, for, like, you know, an event here or there, but like, maintenance is, the word maintenance is maintain. It's like, it can't be like, okay, our park cleanup is this day. I mean, like, this needs to be something that is, you know, like, just every day kind of thing, you know? And you're right, I'm for, I'm for, you know, volunteerism, but I mean, this is, this is, you know, again, it's got to be something new, a new approach to how our parks are being addressed. And again, I just want to draw a line, like, okay, this is, now's the time to make that change. So I think the city manager understands what I'm saying?
We're already working on it.
All right, I know, okay, it's good. I intimated, I intimated that, I just want to, you know, but if it needs to be branded in a sense like, new day, it is a new day, right? You know, let's knock on wood, this pandemic is waning, Auburn's coming back, new parks following through, that's basic. So the city manager's on it, that's the long and short of it.
Tiffany, are you all set?
I am, thank you.
I just want to add one comment. I smiled when Counselor Cuddy said he'd like to go back to the 70s and 80s. And I'm looking around the room, there's probably quite a few of us who like to remember parks of the 70s and 80s, so we'll work on that for everyone.
You know, Counselor LaCastro, I used to be the scoreboard changer when he was playing the outfield in softball back in the 80s. So he remembers me sitting on the ladder. We used to have a lot of conversations back then, too, so.
You did tell me you were going to run for council back then.
Oh, yeah, no, I was.
Thank you, Tiffany. Before we move on, I'd just like to remind everyone, our public hearing is still open. Is there anyone who'd like to speak in that regard? No one? We're going to close, we'll close the public hearing for time. We'll move along to Mr. Deigert, City of Auburn, and your review.
Thank you, Mayor and councilors, for an opportunity to go through what I hope to be a really brief overview of some of the things that have happened over the last year. Kind of a nice follow-up to the parks discussion, and I will, I want to say one thing, I've said it before, but I'm going to say it again because I think it's important. Throughout the last couple of years, I think all of us, regardless of what you do, where you come from, or where you live, we've all noticed changes in levels of service, whether it be at a restaurant, a retail establishment, or calling for maybe a home repair or something of that nature. I don't think, I'm very confident that most of the people that live or work in the City of Auburn have not seen a decrease in their level of service over the last two years. We've continued to move along, and we've got great people doing good work, and they're doing it every single day regardless of the weather, regardless of COVID or any of those things. And additionally, throughout this whole thing, those same people have taken on a tremendous amount of extra additional duties, whether it's our, you know, staff here at City Hall, whether it be in planning or our finance office, dealing with all these different funding streams that were coming in that were in addition to and in response to COVID and things like that, or whether it was our folks working at clinics and trying to help the public health aspect of things. Our people stepped up big time. So I'm going to blast through some of these slides because some folks are probably getting sleepy. And the intent was never to really dive deep into any of these things that are here, but just a real brief overview for, to refresh everybody's memory and for the public to really, you know, be able to see, you know, there's a lot that goes on here, day in, day out, aside from all the extra stuff that's been thrown at us over the last year or so. So again, if you can bear with me through this, if you have any questions as we go through, throw them out there, and we'll do this. These are in no particular order, but just wanted to go through, and so some of them you'll see are kind of by department, and others are just kind of in there because we've got some of our projects, obviously, touch on so many different departments. I tried to avoid giving any particular department credit for a particular project, but it's just the way things go. Our Corporation Council's Office, every single week that we have one of these council meetings, they review our agendas. Corporation Council's Office works with the city manager on all labor and employment matters for nearly 400 employees, handles all claims, all FOIL requests, reviews all of our real estate matters on a regular basis. All of the contracts that the city enters into are reviewed by Corporation Council's Office. Our tax foreclosures, which have kind of been in a holding pattern up until just a couple of weeks ago, and we are moving forward with that process again now. And we've been trying to streamline that process and make it more efficient for staff and avoid abuses of that system. Corp Council's Office reviews all the legal matters for our boards and commissions when things come up for the variety of boards and commissions that we have. They'll weigh in with their research and opinion, and they deal with tax assessment challenges. And this is another one of those things that for years, that was work that was farmed out someplace else. It's another thing that's been brought in-house so that we have a little bit more control over it and more control over the costs of those proceedings. We work with housing code issues and all matters of litigation. And related to COVID, Corporation's Council's Office reviewed every single executive order that came out and all of the guidance that came out in between to see how those particular orders would apply to the City of Auburn and our workforce or what we were doing in the community. The staff themselves helped to staff various clinics from time to time, whether they were testing clinics or vaccination clinics. They drafted multiple MOUs with not only our labor units but partner agencies like East Hill Family Medical so that we could provide the work we did out in the community and developed, helped us to develop our work rules related to COVID, which are ever-changing. They played a big part in police reform and that process that we went through in cooperation with the Sheriff's Office in Keuga County. They dealt with the repeal of 50A, which was related to the confidentiality of disciplinary records of public officers. And they've been walking us through the marijuana legislation or legalization and regulation. As was demonstrated earlier tonight, have been working through the opioid litigation, which is one of the very few things that has been farmed out, but because of the scope of that particular litigation and process, that is, has been farmed out. And they've been a big part of our nuisance abatement committee, which we'll touch on a little bit later here, real briefly. Our engineering department, let's see, Mr. Lupien's here with us, obviously taking care of day-to-day stuff, mostly known for the annual road program, but other things like the long-awaited Tech Park lighting project. I think that was a project that was discussed for probably close to 20-ish years, and we finally got that wrapped up. They are currently working on the South Street street lamp replacement, so that's, it's in the works and has been approved by the council, so that will be happening in this next construction season. In the past year, the Lake Ave Bridge lighting upgrade project happened, and we'll talk about future projects in a bit, and obviously the Lake Ave reconstruction project is in that. They played a part in Bradford Street Playground related to the inspection of the construction of that project, permaculture park design and inspection, the water main design and inspection at Woodlawn and Parker Street, Pulseover Drive water main design, State Street sanitary sewer design. Some of these are upcoming projects that you'll see disrupting traffic flow soon. John Street stormwater sewer extension to allow for some development in that area. They did the project inspection for the wholesale sewer meter project where we have the interconnections with the town to allow us to more accurately meter sewer flows into the city so that we can more accurately bill for those. They've been working with the parking garage for years and years, but since 2009, between the fire and the upgrades that we're doing, they've been a constant presence there, and coordinated the South Street reconstruction project, which just recently wrapped up. Other things that they've been working on, the Aurelius Ave Bridge, it's one of those areas of the city that depending on where you live and where you travel, you may not get down that way very often, but the bridge was flagged and there needed some temporary repairs to remain open. They coordinated that work and will be coordinating the reconstruction of that bridge, which is one of the next ones slated. They work with our Bridge New York applications for grant funding for bridge and culvert As mentioned before, Lake Ave Bridge was recently awarded $4.6 million for reconstruction as well, so they'll be working on that. They've been heading up our tree inventory program and grant programs related to the trees and the management plans. Road program this past year, 16 sections of street were addressed with approximately 37,000 square yards of resurfacing, 845 linear foot of curb, 117 manholes, and catch basins were repaired or replaced as well. Under the sidewalk programs combined, 20,691 square foot of sidewalk was replaced and 539 feet of curb. They also oversaw some demolition projects, most notably the Wall Street Church. Seems like just yesterday we were dealing with that, but the Wall Street Church demolition project, and then the most recent ones over the last week or two, those being Auburn Cement Products, 6 Barber Street, and 6 to 8 Garrow Street. 6 Barber Street and 6 to 8 Garrow Street. Just a couple of quick views of South Street reconstruction. We've had several presentations on that, but again, that was from Clymer Street to the city line, which included the replacement of water lines, sewer lines, storm sewer lines, a culvert, the installation of sidewalks, curbs, street trees, and ornamental street lighting. Parking garage, again, there was a project that was related to the damage from a fire in 2019 that was still wrapping up this year, and then we rolled that right into a capital project to upgrade the parking garage structurally, cosmetically, improve the lighting, improve the security, and just make it a little bit more appealing to our downtown business workers, the folks that visit those downtown businesses and visitors from out of town. And that's an ongoing project. Right now, the significant cold has slowed that project down slightly for a couple of weeks, but we should be back on the upswing here soon. State Street Bridge Replacement Project, again, happened over the summertime and opened up at the end of summer. But that was another complete replacement project that included a pocket park, repair of the retaining walls and things like that. Major project that has been selected for an award for transportation projects. We should be hearing more about that relatively soon. Our comp trawlers office on a regular basis is always dealing with the budget. Somebody asked me the other day, is this when you start the budget process? The budget process almost never stops around here. We talk about it maybe more formally from now until May or June, but the budget process is continual, it's a living document and things change with us constantly. This year was especially burdensome on our comp trawlers office with the annual audit. There were some new requirements that the auditors had that caused our comp trawler to go back about 10 years in some of our records, and you'll be hearing more about that in a few weeks when we have the auditors report. They deal with all of our payroll issues, bonding, obviously property assessment, as we heard last week. The comp trawler herself actually oversees the information technology aspect of what we do here in the city, and I'll get more into that. Human resources and procurement oversight and compliance, whether it be a big contract or whether it's just us buying pencils and pens. That all happens out of the finance office. And the financial evaluation of all of our contracts and agreements and our financial planning and forecasting. This year, our comp trawler Rachel Jacobs was appointed as the Central Region Board Member to the GFOA, which was good for her, I think. It's a nice recognition. I'm not sure how much extra work that puts on her, but it's a nice recognition anyway. They continue, she continues to walk us through COVID and ARPA-related finances and what's acceptable, what's not. It's a constant discussion that happens between Rachel and Christina Selvik, walking us through all of those things to make sure we're in compliance and maximizing the benefit of those funds. FEMA reimbursements, always a big thing, but this time around, we're dealing with FEMA reimbursements related to not only COVID, but we also have a natural disaster in there as well with, what was it, Tropical Storm Fred, I believe. So there's all of that stuff that comes in and extensive amount of reporting that goes into those things in order to get those reimbursements. Some new things that were happening in the finance office is implementation of scanning of purchase-related documents for each invoice. So in the past, it was a very manual process, paper copies stored in the attic and things like that. And what's happening now is that when individual departments make a purchase, all of the supporting documentation is actually scanned in, becomes part of the record, so it can easily in the future be tracked down as part of an electronic record. Again, like every other department throughout the city, they assisted with vaccination clinics and coordination and the financial aspect of that on behalf of the city. We've just recently hopefully wrapped up an upgrade to the Munis financial system that we have here and I think still working through a few bugs here and there that you would expect with an upgrade. And put a lot of effort into setting up the financial aspect of the city ambulance. So I mentioned information technology. This is a large exposure for the city. And if we look at what's happening across the state and across the nation, information technology, cybersecurity is a huge thing. So we were operating, the city was operating for years on a patchwork of systems, programs, hardware, software even. And what we've tried to do over the last year or so is to bring that together, modernize the system and streamline things. So there's an awful lot that's happened with IT over the last year or so. The main hub for our IT department moved into the new Public Safety Building, where it has emergency power and redundant power, which is helpful. That'll keep us able to continue operating if there are issues with the grid. Our IT department deployed new standardized computers citywide. Instead of having a mix of hardware around, a lot of that stuff now has been standardized. Operating, updating our operating systems to improve security. We're moving to two-factor authentication and all those things recommended by IT experts and quite frankly, our insurance carrier. We also standardized copiers citywide. We did a new telephone city, telephone system citywide. Over the last two years, they certainly have been busy supporting our needs to support our workers doing remote work related to COVID and things like that. Our firewall was updated. Antivirus protection has been updated. Let's see, what else have we done here? Standardizing some of our wireless infrastructure. And, you know, that work will continue. There's still more work to be done, but there's been a major investment of time, effort, and equipment put into our IT systems throughout the city. Our assessors office, as you heard last week, was busy this year doing the revale and continue assisting residents with their exemption applications. And that office has been extremely busy, as you might imagine, over the last week or so. Will continue that way for quite some time. Fire Department, maybe one of the most visible departments we've had in the city related to COVID with their assistance with COVID testing sites and vaccination clinics. Partnered with the Quidah County Department of Health, East Hill Family Medical, and Auburn Community Hospital over the last two years. And at last count, I don't know if we have an exact count, but it was over 150 vaccination and testing clinics they had assisted with. And we don't have necessarily a great handle on how many, how many arms that translates into, but it's a lot. The Fire Department continues to support the Auburn City Ambulance as it gets its feet under it and grows and gets acclimated to what's going on. And they provided some of the initial support in terms of planning. And then related to the new Public Safety Building and Seminary, crews and individuals there helped with design support, collaborating on construction and construction inspection to a certain extent, if you will. Support for the build-out, move-in, and beginning their operations in October. And they continue to work with planning staff and the contractors to tie up some of the remaining few loose ends there. And in 2021, they responded to 7,851 calls for service. Quick view of the Public Safety Building. And in the, in the center there is a view of the Emergency Operations Center, which serves double duty as a training room, community room. It's been used for several, several meetings of community concern already and doubles in a natural disaster as an emergency operations center. Auburn City Ambulance was approved by council in the spring and we started putting that together very soon thereafter. Hired a Director of Operations during the summertime and the ambulance did its first calls for service on November 1st of 2021. In that short timeframe between November 1st and the end of December 2021, the ambulance service did 1,208 calls for service. This is an extremely, extremely busy service. It would be busy at a normal time, but with COVID and all of the other stuff we've got going on, this has been a very busy operation. They're also providing inter-facility transfers from Auburn Community Hospital, which those are things that happen normally on a certain basis, but with the extra load that COVID has put on the hospital, the number of inter-facility transfers has been pretty significant. And for us, for that ambulance, that average is about 60 transfers a month out of that facility. And they range anywhere from going to Syracuse or Rochester to going to Pennsylvania or Westchester, depending on what the particular situation might be. And we're still developing that service. We're still working on, you know, getting to full staffing, but we're doing well. One of the questions that would probably come up is, I know as we got into this, one of our metrics that we use was the amount of mutual aid that had to come in and cover calls in the city. And that still happens on occasion because the system gets extremely busy. But we are also providing mutual aid outside of the city in pretty much an equal amount. And we've gone from a large number of mutual aid calls into the city to very few. Auburn Police Department, this year hired four special patrol officers. You may recall that was done in an effort to supplement the SROs and be able to keep more police officers on patrol in the streets and not negatively impact their overall staffing. Overall staffing was a struggle for Auburn Police Department for quite a long time. And this, this year, this past year, they were able to hire 10 new police officers, which has slowed that a little bit, that gap has closed. I think now, Chief, you're at three vacancies currently. So we're making progress. As has been mentioned before, a grant was received for body worn cameras and we're working through that process. Again, that was something that was identified as a priority as we went through, worked through the police reform project with the county. Police Department has increased their training for reality-based training, instructor training and supervisor training. It's a very young, maybe not young, inexperienced workforce at this point compared to what it has been in past years. A lot of seniority was lost in the department over the last couple of years, so training's important. They are, they are continuing to go through the accreditation process and are close to where they need to be with that. Hear that guy? Got a new police chief in July. And police reform was a big topic, took a lot of staff time from the police department and some of our other departments. And we had council input on those meetings that stretched across several months. So that's an ongoing process that will be revisited on occasion to make sure that the findings and the direction are pertinent to what's going on at any particular time. We've also been having lots of discussions about the Mobile Crisis Intervention Team and continued discussions with the county on turning that into a 24-hour-a-day operation. And I would expect to see that before council in one way or another, probably in the next month or so, hopefully. At this point, we're waiting on the Quidah County Legislature to do what they need to do and then we'll, we'll follow up from there. All right, our Planning Department. We heard a lot already about the Planning Department and CDBG and Parks, so I'm not going to review all of these things here, but they've had a lot to do with the Public Safety Building and project management and inspection there. The State Street Public Plaza, which should be completed in June, has been an ongoing project and something that's been in the works again for maybe a good 10 years, right? So we're getting that wrapped up, which is good. And have been involved with all of these things that were mentioned before, the CDBG plan, our parks, permaculture park, playgrounds, tree plantings, the Casey Park skate park and sidewalk improvements. Some of the other things going on in the Planning Department, we continue to operate with some assistance from the LIST grant. In this past few months, our performance with that program was good enough and recognized by the folks that dole out the funding for that, that we actually got some additional funding to extend out that LIST program that we have here in-house. And that's been impactful. Working on a Chapel House redevelopment, that was supposed to be another presentation tonight and that'll happen at a later time. And we put this in here because it's always a topic of conversation or a question that gets asked probably of all of you, as well as a lot of us from staff. What's going on with the Bombardier Building? The Bombardier Building was, the Bombardier Company and its assets were sold or taken over by a company called Alstrom. And we have started conversations with them and continue to have conversations with them about the fate of that site. Planning Board also works, I'm sorry, the Planning Department also works with our Planning Board and the Historic Resources Review Board on their projects and processes. They're always part of our demolition process throughout and mostly, you know, related to the funding and the impact on neighborhoods, things like that. And related to COVID and some of the funding related to that, again, $267,000 in CDBG Corona CB3 funding. And they continue to monitor over $500,000 in CB1 funding. And again, like most of our departments, their staff has stepped up outside of their regular work duties to assist us and assist the county in places like East Hill with vaccination clinics and things like that. Just a quick, couple shots of the State Street Public Plaza, the rendering on the left and the actual work on the right. We're a little bit more advanced than what you should see in the picture on the right, right at this moment. But again, the weather's had an impact on progress there for right at the moment. Hopefully in the next few weeks, we'll start to see that fire back up again. Code enforcement, which comes under our Planning Department, has been busy. There's a lot going on, even despite all of the things that, that could potentially slow down progress. We've been very busy with construction projects throughout the city, private projects. There's been a lot of discussion that we're having with potential developers for upcoming projects. So that's all part of this. The Code Enforcement Department issued 1,240 permits in 2021. 178 certificates of occupancy were scheduled. Hundred seventy-eight certificates of occupancy were scheduled, fifty-two were issued, which tells you a little bit of something about the dynamic between how many are asked for and how many are actually granted, with one hundred twenty-six pending. And typically, those are pending because there are other repairs necessary to provide that certificate of occupancy. They dealt with one thousand five hundred thirty-six complaints in two thousand twenty-one, wrote thirty-two hundred violations and are still dealing with two, over two thousand open violations. So it's, again, one of those things, it's time-consuming administrative task to keep up on what's out there and make sure that we follow up on those things. Code Enforcement's been instrumental in doing some securing of properties. This is stuff that's been happening in conjunction with mostly the Corporation Council's office and the police department and to some extent, the Fire Department as well. The most noteworthy one was Eight Delevin Street, which took quite a while for us to do and it was done through a court order. We've since learned and evolved and come up with some internal methods to accomplish the same things and have secured properties at forty-one Morris Street and One Easterly Place in order to clean up neighborhoods and discourage bad behavior in some of those neighborhoods. Code Enforcement has been part of organizing along with planning and the Fire Department and Police Department. And some of our elected officials from time to time walks through neighborhoods. Not everybody realizes that that actually happens, but yes, we walk through neighborhoods to see what's going on and identify problems and try to come up with solutions. The Nuisance Abatement Committee was a big thing that we implemented this year to try to deal with problem properties, not just code compliance issues, but issues related to police calls for service, violent type activity, drug activity, things like that. So that process has been ongoing. The Nuisance Abatement Committee has not had to exercise a full extent of their authority, but just the fact that we're reviewing properties, communicating with the property owners and the neighborhoods, we've seen actually really good results from just going through the process. So we'll continue to do that and hope for continued good results. Public Works, as you know from Mike Talbot, when he comes up here and talks about his department, there's a wide range of activities that they take care of and I'll try to zip through a few of those things. Obviously, one of the big things throughout the city is street trees and the Emerald Ash Bore has been an issue and certainly it's been very visible, the damage that that has done to the tree scape in the city. Our city crews are working side by side with some private contractors. We brought in private contractors to deal with things like trees that are in proximity to power lines and things like that. So far, they've removed approximately four hundred twenty ash trees. I believe that's about one-third of their, the number of trees they need to deal with. They helped to coordinate and organize the annual tree planting event and in the last year, they planted about sixty trees. Potholes are normally a source of complaints, especially in the springtime. And this past year, they used one thousand two hundred tons of asphalt to deal with potholes as temporary repairs to deal with that until road program can come around and fix them more permanently. We included a little bullet point here, forty-four burials at Soul Cemetery. And I kept that on there, not because the number's necessarily terribly large, but the care and maintenance of Soul Cemetery is a major thing. And it's a beautiful facility if you ever have an opportunity to just drive through. It's meticulously maintained and it is something that we're responsible for, as well as the North Street Cemetery, who is accepting, which is accepting no new residents, but we still have responsibility to maintain it. They provide the maintenance support for the Equal Rights Heritage Center. And it's been mentioned several times tonight, city events. So in two thousand twenty-one, the Holiday Parade came back around, Tomato Fest, Founder's Day came back around. In two thousand twenty-one, they hosted nineteen band concerts and eight movies at city parks, hung twenty-four banners for events across Genesee Street and set up the Showmobile eleven times. I expect the Showmobile to be set up many more times this coming year. And we recently had an events meeting and much like the budget, the events is something that just happens year round. There's always discussion about what's happening in the next year for events. And we have had discussion related to programming in city parks and how we're going to potentially deal with that. And what we're hoping to do is do the movie nights in the parks and playgrounds, similar to what we had done in the past and get them out of just one location, spread them around to neighborhoods and potentially do the same thing with programming. So we've got a list of city parks here, the Healing Fields display at Hoops Park and certainly always a lot of events going on at Hoops Park and a lot of attention given to that facility. Clifford Field hosted early voting and voting, which it typically does. Veterans Park had the Veterans Day Ceremony. And in the future, we are looking at upgrades to Hoops Park. We're looking for upgrades to Veterans Park, those are projects that are currently in the works. Our City Parks Department also deals with our men's and women's softball leagues. And last year, we partnered with a private group to do other programming for youth, youth programming at our city parks. And we've recently had a meeting with them and plan to expand that programming out into city parks or city playgrounds, I should say, select city playgrounds as kind of a pilot project with a variety of activities, not just sports, but literacy programs and other things for maybe those folks that aren't necessarily as athletically inclined or interested as others. So we're getting back into that programming mode and we're going to see how that goes with a partnership. Casey Park, again, over the last few years, we've sunk a lot of resources into Casey Park. It's beautiful down there. We fixed a lot of things over the last couple of years that really were in disrepair and needed it. This particular year, we installed new dashboard panels at the rink, new lobby floor tiles. There's a new, as the picture shows, a new four-sided scoreboard at the rink. And we host the Auburn High School Varsity Hockey and the Auburn Hockey Club Youth Hockey through October through February. The pool has recently had renovations done to it and new furniture. Counselor Cuddy, I had to throw that out there because somebody was going to. Got new furniture last year. Casey Park Pool, even through COVID, still hosted a lot of, a lot of folks down there. We actually changed the rules and it seemed to actually have a good impact on turnover at the pool. And so we're talking now about some future improvements to Casey Park, possibly being indoor turf for the hockey rink area in the off-season. When there's not ice on it, it would allow it to be utilized for some other sports and be able to have us expand programming at Casey Park. Skate Park, again, a work in progress thanks to the Planning Department and Counselor Cuddy for moving that stuff forward and DPW will be part of that discussion as it moves along. Falcon Park, again, after the major investment in that a couple of years ago, this was the first year after that renovation that we've had to actually program it and get a pretty much a full season out of it, even with some COVID restrictions in there. It hosted twenty-eight Double Days games at Falcon Park, twenty-nine Kyuga Community College baseball games and seventy-four practices, thirteen softball games and thirty-one practices and one soccer game with forty-four soccer practices. Auburn High School utilizes the facility and they utilized it again this past year. It is becoming more and more of a destination for not just baseball, but a variety of sports and different leagues of different age participants. That's a good thing, that's helped us to actually operate that for the first time in a long time at where it's like self-sufficient. But it is definitely becoming an attraction and we hear more and more with that, it's becoming a problem, a good problem, to actually coordinate all that stuff and make sure we're pumping as much activity in there as we possibly can. Because again, a lot of that stuff is our local residents, a lot of that is visitors coming from out of town. The Double Days, as you recall, this year changed over from a minor league team into a collegiate wood bat team. That transition went well, so well that Abner even looks younger now and he doesn't have a white mustache and all that. So we have a new, we have a new mascot. The last report I had as of last week from the owners of the Double Days, the current operators of that franchise, is that they are seeing a significant response from the folks that they're reaching out to for sponsorships and things like that and even season ticket holders are increasing. So I think they did great work last year and they were really, they got a short start on things, right? They didn't have an entire season or off-season to get things going. This year, they've got that advantage and it seems to be working well for them, so we should have a good season. Again, I know some of these things were recent reports to council, but our landfill, always exciting stuff. Collected nine hundred three tons of brush at Curbside and delivered six hundred one tons of chip material to the compost area. Collected over nine thousand tons of garbage curbside from our residence and five hundred sixty-three tons of cardboard and four hundred forty tons of mixed recyclables. And if Mike Talbot was here right now, he'd tell you that that's, they can always tell how the economy is doing based on the amount of garbage they're picking up and they've been busy. The transfer station had its first full year of operation and they took in twelve thousand one hundred twenty-one tons of trash to be processed. So again, we, after a year of actual operation this year, as we get into the budget, we'll have better numbers to go by than we did last year. Municipal Utilities, I know Seth's going to feel really bad that I don't have all the details of all of these things going on, but lots of projects and lots of stuff going on. Our wastewater, our water treatment plant, we're looking at upgrades to the slow sand filter plant. And there were some other things that had happened over the last year, pump station upgrades and things like that. You may recall that at one point, we had a little scare because we had some valve problems down at the, at the intake portion of things. So, you know, some of those things along the way, after twelve months, you almost forget about the stuff that staff has done along the way. They've completed risk and resiliency studies and emergency response plans as required by the EPA. They also took part in the Hazard Mitigation Plan, as did the Engineering Department, that we do in cooperation with the county and I think that'll come up here later on. And our wastewater treatment plant, obviously, the sludge dryer project has taken on, you know, that's certainly a major project all on its own, the planning for that. But again, the sewer meter project was completed mostly in-house, right? So we had some contractors on it, but Seth brought a lot of that project in-house in order to get the budget where we needed it to be and it was a successful project, so that was a good thing. Collection and Distribution, which is the folks that are out there in the streets doing water and sewer lines and things like that. Installed an odor control system in the sludge loading bay of the, for, of the wastewater treatment plant. And it seems like that might be miscategorized, but at any rate, that happened at the wastewater treatment plant. The hydros had two hundred sixty-one days of operation this year, which is pretty good. It was a wet, the last part of the summer and fall was kind of wet, so that was decent for that, with estimated earnings just over half a million dollars. So over the last several years, between construction and trying to fine tune the hydros, it's, it's paid off to where the hydros are finally, you know, they're working, the automation systems are working pretty well and optimizing output based on the flows going through. Water Department, really busy year for water and sewer departments out there between things like tropical storm Fred and all of the other rain events that we had, some of it unprecedented, kept them busy. But aside from that, replaced twenty-five water services, repaired thirty-two main breaks. And we've seen that number kind of fluctuate from time to time. Certainly thirty-two main breaks isn't a good thing, but that's why you see some of the plans that, under the Engineering Department, where there's engineering plans being put in place to replace some of these water mains in affected areas. Had two large repairs in high-traffic areas, one at Genesee and Seminary Ave. You may recall that we had several rain events in a row, prolonged that project and then North Street in front of the Holiday Inn. And they also painted approximately three hundred hydrants, which probably doesn't necessarily seem like a big deal, but if they look nice, it makes a neighborhood look nice or somebody's front yard look nice and it's also an opportunity for them to make sure that the functionality of that hydrant is appropriate. The Sewer Department teams up with the Water Department and Public Works to mill and repair certain areas, typically around structures like manholes and catch basins. This summer, they blacked top forty structures on North Street and the Artorial did sixty-five overall throughout the city, flushed and cleaned out the wastewater treatment tank or wastewater retention tank on John Walsh Boulevard, the dome, as we call it, a project which took about ten days to do down there, but is necessary for longevity of that facility. Had some new storm laterals put in on North Marvin Ave to reduce icing, which had been a, quite a long-term problem on that street, especially this time of year. Would create icy road conditions and hazards in the area. And then they replaced the Chapman Ave culvert, which had been in disrepair, not flowing an appropriate amount of water and causing problems for the neighbors in that area and upstream from that area. And we had tropical storm Fred, which became a challenge for controlling lake level and maintaining our own infrastructure. Eight inches of rain in a very short period of time stressing out our stormwater and sanitary sewer infrastructure. Told you I'd mention the Kyuga County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Kyuga County Hazard Mitigation Plan gets updated every few years. And what that is used to do, it identifies a lot of hazards, but most of them are weather-related hazards and the most common one is flooding. What that allows us to do here is if we participate in that process and we get our projects or our problem areas included in that plan, it helps us to make the argument for federal funding in the future for projects like culvert replacements and things like that. Of course, I mentioned earlier, the sewer meter project should happen. Downtown Revitalization Initiative, several projects being worked on, a few that got wrapped up like Rudolph's and the Public Safety Building. Of course, we've got the State Street Plaza that'll be wrapping up hopefully in June. And just a number of things going on, both public and private with Downtown Revitalization Initiative. And all along the way, whether that's some of the small business assistance that went out or some of the other not-for-profits, that is all administrative work that's happening behind the scenes, right? You know, what the public sees and what gets the most attention is the actual physical stuff that you see happening at a site. But behind the scenes in the office, there's a whole lot of paperwork that's going on to make sure that the funding continues to flow and that it's being done properly. Didn't want anybody to forget, we're still doing two-hour free parking downtown and extended that. This year, we were awarded the additional funding. This year, we were awarded the additional funding through the state for the touring funds and were able to tackle a lot of street projects that had been being put off. We're hopeful that this funding stays in the state budget. I believe it's still in the proposed state budget, and if that happens again this year or over the course of a couple of years, we'll do very well to catch up on our road program and some of the other related items. The American Rescue Plan, again, work in progress across a lot of departments, but a ton of this work right now has been work that Christina Selvik has been tackling along with Rachel Jacobs to try to make sure that our expenditures are appropriate, proper and in line with the rules and regulations set forth by the federal government. So again, much like the Downtown Revitalization Initiative, there's things that are going to be very visible to folks, but what's not visible is all of that background work that's happening in the offices here to make that happen. COVID-19, almost forgot that. You know, we've continued to do things like supporting the hotline for those folks that were having difficulty signing up for clinics and things like that. That continues. We've staffed testing clinics and vaccination clinics with vaccinators from the Fire Department as well as administrative staff and things like that. Partnered with the Kyuga County Health Department and East Hill Family Medical and Auburn Community Hospital. We've assisted with contact tracing until we weren't contact tracing anymore last week. And we've been doing things like personal protective equipment distribution when that gets funneled through us. And again, manage ever-changing New York State mandates and guidance to the best of our ability. So that's kind of wraps up 2021 and some of the things we've got that we're, I don't know if we're looking forward to them or expecting them. Continued COVID responses, the skate park project, the Aurelius Ave Bridge project, Lake Ave Bridge project, Hoops Park rehabilitation and planning. We're still talking about that. We'll come back to you with that. We know we want to do the retaining wall for Hoops Park Pond, but it may be an opportunity for us to go through and do a revamp of Hoops Park all at the same time. The mayor's been very interested in historic documents preservation. That's still on our radar. Somebody, oh, I skipped over Farrell Katz. I knew it was him.
I was going to say.
Farrell Katz does not come off the radar. I just want to make sure that's on there. We are aware. We are aware. Again, we've been working with the Police Department, will continue to work with the Police Department on their facility and the shared ambulance facility for upgrade and renovation there. And we know that City Hall here, again, constructed and commissioned in 1930, needs an upgrade, mechanical upgrades, security upgrades, cosmetic upgrades as well. So we'll be working on planning for that and continue our neighborhood revitalization efforts and some of the programs we've started there. I'm sorry if that went long. I think I might have broke my own rule, so. Wanted to make sure I got through this, so. Any questions?
Counsel, please.
Thank you. I, I think you might have surpassed Mr. Johnson's record. A couple of things. Yes, it was long. I know it was probably a lot of work for you and staff to put this together, but I think there's so much value in you doing this and periodically presenting this depth of information to the public. It, it really highlights the ser, the day-to-day services that all of us rely on, how involved they are. It also, I mean, you highlighted so many challenges that we face as a community, that every other community in this country faces, whether it's shortages in police staffing, challenges like police reform, the opiate epidemic, ambulance service, COVID. I think what sets us apart, and obviously I'm biased, is the way that we respond to it. And, and those things I just mentioned, those were significant challenges in the last couple of years, and you and the entire city organization have responded to them and they, you've, I don't want to say you've solved them because they're ongoing problems, but you put mechanisms in place, I think, to address them. I mean, you sent us all an article today about another community that is struggling with a private ambulance service and feels the need to take that on themselves. It's not so much because they want to do it, it's because it's a necessity. And then, again, we, we face the same problems as so many other communities do. I think the third thing that I take away from this presentation is the amount of investment. Not only this presentation, but the previous presentations tonight. You know, I said to somebody a couple of months ago, there hasn't been this much investment in the city of Auburn since urban renewal, and that was to tear everything down. This investment is rebuilding and, and really setting, I believe, the city on a good course for the future. So thank you, thank the entire city organization, and I hope the public is watching this because I think if they are, they too will appreciate what goes, what goes on in this organization on a daily basis. So thank you.
Thank, thank you for the comment. And, and again, this, this really, as much as was in here, is really an overview from each of the department heads. I received a bullet point list of things, and I, I plan to actually forward, compile all that, forward it to all of you so you can see all of the stuff that's in there because certainly there's projects that have happened that just, you know, we'd be here all night long if we did that, so.
Is Mr. Jensen here?
Yes.
Oh, I didn't realize you were here. So I was going to say, he, and I spent some time earlier this week, he took me, we started out the pump house and ended up in the wastewater treatment plant. So I was going to say, I could answer any questions that you had, but I, I can't now because he's here, so I'm not going to do that. But I do want to say that one thing I kept hearing over and over during his education for me was, and you reinforced it a little bit, was how much, how much talent we have right here to rebuild, to solve problems. So many times he would say, well, this happened and the team got on it and we had it fixed and we moved on. And I just kept thinking, you know, we didn't have to get bids to have somebody come in and give us quotes and fix it, you know, and come in and do it. We have the resources right here and that's really, really impressed me. So I just wanted to mention that because you, you also mentioned it. Thanks again, Mr. Jensen. Thanks.
I, I just want to comment, you know, slide after slide after slide of like an amazing amount of work that this city does for its people. And as you said, this is just a, an overview, but you know, even I was like, wow, yeah, oh my God, I forgot about that. Oh, it's like, I know everything that's going on, but to see it all in one place and at one time, just, just, it just really has an impact. So I, thanks for, for doing this and reminding the public and really kind of reminding us how much has been done. And, you know, I, I'd like to say that, you know, I kind of liken the amount of investment to the city to more like the New Deal. And because it is building, it is reinvesting into, you know, its people and, and the, the structures and facility. And I think, I see Auburn as kind of, you know, you know, taking full advantage of that. And you could see it in this presentation. So, you know, with Counsel Giannettino saying like recognizing amount of investment, we're really leveraging that and doing, doing so, so many great things. So thanks for, for sharing it.
We've been the lucky recipient of millions and millions of grant dollars, which really are local tax dollars coming back here, right? So if we don't, if we don't get them back, some other community will reap the benefit of, of those monies. So it's, it's still our taxpayers' money, but we're fortunate that we're able to get it back here.
Absolutely.
Get made projects that you've mentioned have been growing slowly over decades. So I'm very happy being here next to Mr. Loopy and one of the longest people around, person around, but it's about time that we started tackling these problems and bringing them back down where we could work with them from day to day, week to week. But it's just been, always been put off till next year if someone else was, and I, I'm glad you, you have the proactive attitude and I'm very, very proud personally. I'm sure counsel agrees with everyone on staff because everyone comes to work and does a day and a half worth of work in eight hours. So thank you, thank you all the staff. It means a lot.
Okay.
No pay raises, but.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll try to talk over that last, that last point. Thank you, counsel, and thanks to everybody on staff, our department heads and everybody else that is able to get this done, so.
It's amazing amount of work that takes place in here, and Mr. Diker just hit the highlights or the low spots, however you want to term it. There's a lot of work goes on. It, it venture to say a great deal of it happens, other than between the hours of 8:00 AM and 4:00 PM. In the other 16 hours of the day, I think most of it, when it happens, so. Not that everyone does do a good job from 8:00 to 4:00, but a lot of the, the major problems, the serious problems happen, so. Do you have graph reports?
Mayor, really, again, that bar graph report is about the six, obviously the six-month mark in our budget, halfway point in the budget. Things are going well. You will notice in December, there is a significant increase in any area where there's personnel involved, and that is representative of the pension contribution that gets made a couple of times a year. So that's, that spike that you see is a payment into the pension system that'll moderate after a while, and then there's another one later on in the year that, that causes a spike, but it all comes out in the wash. That's all I've got. Unless anybody's got a question.
Ambulance revenues for December.
Those are, let's see, you're looking at revenues or expenses?
Both. Let's start with revenues.
Yep, revenues are going to lag, remember.
Right?
Yep.
They're going to take a little time?
Yeah, they'll take at least probably a good 90 days to start really showing what's going on, and they may take longer than that. So in the very first part of this, I can't remember when I sat down and went over the, the finances with the comptroller for the ambulance, but at that point in time, we billed for about $1.5 million worth of service, and we're only about two months into this right now, so.
Because when I saw it for 777, you can't even take an Uber from?
Yeah, no, no, it's, it's going to take a little while between, because obviously you've got Medicare, Medicaid, private sector insurance, it's going to take a while to see where that all lands.
Will the number 44559, will that drop as time goes on? Will it go up?
I'm trying to see where you're at.
Auburn City Ambulance?
Yep.
It went from 186, 461 in November to 44559 in December.
I'm not sure exactly what's included in that.
There's probably startup fees and everything else in it, isn't there?
It's possible, yes. I can get some more information. We can write that down a little bit more.
And the only other one, codes, seemed like they jumped, and I understand, you kind of answered my question to start, but it seemed like that jumped a lot, too, from November, December.
I'm just trying to find where that particular one is. Let me see where it is here.
It's right before ambulance.
Right before ambulance?
Yeah, it looks like.
Well, the, yeah, the encumbered cost, so the, I don't know if you're looking at colored one or not, the, the red line is encumbered. So that doesn't necessarily, that's not a definite cost at any given time, but as Jenny just mentioned, we've got those demolitions going on and they run through this budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Anyone public to be heard? Is there anyone desiring to be heard this evening? Very well, with that, we, we request for executive.
We do not.
Sure. entertain a motion for adjournment to adjourn? Counsel Kents, second by Counsel Giannettino.
Motion to adjourn, 7:46 PM, Counsel Kents?
Yes.
Counsel Giannettino?
Hi.
Counsel Cuddy?
Yes.
Counsel LaCaster?
Yes.
And Mayor Quill.
Hi, for adjournment.[1778.13]